No, I mean you can take it.
Hey, bud. Mr. Mayor, council members, let's pray. Father, we give you thanks for this opportunity to gather together in your name. I pray for every one of our community leaders, Father, for our mayor, for our council members, for city manager, Father, for our fire chief, our police chief, for all of those who serve this community, Father, in so many ways. I pray that you would bless each one of them, that you would give them a heart of leadership, a heart of discernment, that you would give them vision or your divine imagination for this community, that you would help each one of them to see through your eyes and through your heart every person that makes up Los Baños, Father. That they would not distinguish between the rich and the homeless, between the landowner and the immigrant, between the business owner or the laborer, but recognize that every one of them are a part of what makes up this community, and so, Father, give them your heart for them, that they would seek justice, that they would love mercy, Father, that they would walk humbly with their God as they serve you in this capacity. So bless us and bless them and be with this time, Father. Make this a time of fellowship, of time of coming together, a time of agreement, a time where we can communicate and understand and hear, give them the humility and the desire to listen to each other, to speak in love, to speak with compassion, and to practice gracious interpretation in all that we do, Father. So bless them, be with them, be with our community, bless us, Lord. In the name of Christ, our risen Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Chief Ryan, want to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here, we have a quorum. Let's move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Do I have an emotion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Let's move on to item five, presentations. All right, Dana Rawls. Pretty popular, just gonna point that out. All right, Dana, this is presented to you, administrative coordinator for the fire department, recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Manos for being named employee of the month February 2024. Congratulations. All right, so move on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest. So within the jurisdiction of the city council includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber information table. There's an announcement that we did receive one write-in comment that has been received by the city clerk's office and was distributed to city council the email prior to the to the meeting, and that comment was posted on the city's website for public access. So I'll invite the public to come up.
Let's get this kicked off. And they look so cute. My name is Blanche George, and I have some fellow Elks here for this presentation. You know, when we started Halloween, yes, I know, this is like way past Halloween, our dream nine years ago was to, we had did some dogs for the police department several times, and our dream was to do this for the fire department, the men and women that constantly, every minute roll out. It's, we hear it, we respect it, and I know you guys respect it, so we just wanted to take a few, just a few minutes to to thank our fire department, to thank you for what you do for the fire department and the things that you do. We appreciate it really, truly. Yeah. But the leaders and all the fire individuals, thank you. We really appreciate you guys. It's not an easy job. So what we did do was, we have, we have collected these cute little dominations, and what they are is they're comfort dogs. So when our fire department unfortunately has interaction with a child, they'll have a comfort dog that we will keep providing to help the fire department be able to give comfort to children at the time that they really need it. And so, thank you for your your moment of time, but we Elks are very proud to help support our community, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Halloween event was a huge success, and I was, had the pleasure, and Winsome, of course, we were the co-chairs of the event, and this year I will be, and Winsome will be the chair. So we, yeah, we we took some of the money that we got donated, which brings tears to my eyes. It was a big turnout. I'm sorry, I'm very thankful for living here, and and I respect all that you do. I know you guys get a lot of bashing, and we are very, very thankful at the Elks for the money that we got and the turnout of the event. It was hugely funny, we had Santa and everything, it was great. So this year it's going to be much bigger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't want to take it more than our five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia McCoy from Los Manos. I am here to remind everyone that the Central Valley Honor Flight drive-through dinner is on Monday, March 11th, at the DES Hall from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if you've bought tickets, don't forget to pick them up for your dinners. Tickets are $10, you can still get some, I'm selling them, check out any of the FFA ag boosters or any of the veterans. Pretty sure that if you don't connect and you want to just show up, I'm sure that they will sell you a dinner. If you don't eat pasta, it is a rigatoni dinner, and if you don't eat pasta, you can donate it or just make a donation for a really worthy cause, so thank you very much.
I'm Ann McCauley, local resident. Good evening, Mayor, and its council members. The other day celebrations were fantastic, the breakfast in the morning and the afternoon celebration with all the kids that did so well with their with their exhibits and also being able to pick up a planting to to take home. Fantastic, and the parks are looking fabulous. I live next to or close to College Greens, and the the change that's happening there with new equipment is fantastic. So really appreciate all the people that work at Park and Rec and those that are also installing everything, it looks fabulous. I wanted to respond to something that I heard last week. Greg Hostetler was here, and one of the things that really gets my craw, I live in College Greens, I've been there for over 27 years, and our particular area of College Greens is fantastic. We've never had issues over all these years, and it's just really a great place to live. It hasn't been degraded like other places might have have might have become over the years. But the thing that really irks me is the the new segment, I believe it's called O'Shaughnessy. I didn't follow it from the very beginning, so I don't know if it changed developers or whatever, but the thing that, you know, if a developer is going to be proud of their site where they build homes, for gosh sakes, the least they can do is put in landscaping, lighting to that entrance on De Anza. I don't, you know, it, whose fault it is that it didn't happen, but I think it falls on the developer to make his lands, his project stand out, because that's his name, that's his reputation, and the fact that that has been blocked off for people that live in that area and they have to go around on scripts speaks volumes. You know, you can shine all you want about all of the donations that you make, and on and on and on. Well, I think it's time to be philanthropic and get that landscaping lighting in there. When it went in, there's a median in between the two lanes, and I thought surely there'd be some landscape lighting. I can't imagine that a developer would just, you know, book out of there once his houses are built and no landscaping, lighting is even in there. It may not have been adequate for everything, but at least you would have a demarcation where you exit, in or out, especially when it's dark at night. I just think that's, I think that's despicable when a developer, any developer, does not make that whole, their area look smart. One of the things that I have noted, when the credit union built their site on the corner, and by the way, they've done a fabulous job, I think it's fantastic that we don't have anything but that credit union there. We have, I mean, we could have had stores or whatever, but this is, and they built a sidewalk, whether they had to or not, they built a sidewalk. And to me, if a developer is going to build a piece apart, build anything on the other side of a sound wall, why in the heck can't they build a sidewalk? Never mind that this is state land on a state highway, but that sidewalk speaks volumes for the kids that need to walk in that area, and I just think that should be one more thing. It may not be something that's required of them, but I do think that they need to, it should be something that the city considers, that if they're going to have a sound wall, let's get, let's get some sidewalk part of that as well. I just think that it finishes off any project, and it just makes it look better in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Kathy Ballard. I just have one question. After the incident that happened at Home Depot, there was postings on the city's face page that were removed. I don't know what that, your guys' is, I'm sorry, Facebook, sorry, I only read a page of it, on your Facebook, and then it was deleted and all the other things in regards to it. My question is, is that people go there to see what's happening in the city, good, bad, or ugly, and it was removed, and so then it's just the chatter among different people. I don't know, what is our Facebook for if not to inform the citizens of Los Manos that they should be nervous, they live near here, what's going on? That's my only comment, and if you can answer it later, I'd appreciate it, like in your closing statements, I know you can't say anything right now, but I'd appreciate any kind of information in regards to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and public. My name is Greg Hostetler. I'd like to talk tonight to city manager Josh Panero. I'll let you know that I'm less than impressed with your performance, Josh. You've been paid $1.8 million plus approximately $265,000 salary package, and you're the richest city manager ever to serve in the city of Los Manos with the least amount of experience and least amount of team attitude. Your actions and attitude is creating what happens and appears to be a hostile, stressful, and harassing environment towards the city employees and the public. These appear to be a substantial amount of staff being mistreated. And now I'm going to talk about your performance. De Anza Way is not being addressed. I got a nastygram from the city of Los Manos on September 1, 2022, after De Anza was open to traffic for more than three years. The nastygram was requesting an answer to the situation or else. On September 22, 2022, we provided a city a multi-page, itemized response of the situation on De Anza Way. We again sent a follow-up letter on May 20, 2023 regarding the same subject. To date, I have not received an answer from the city to either letter. Received an MOU from city attorney Bill Vaughn on September 13, 2023. Last year, after you got rehired, I invited you to my office so you and I met and talked about resolving the situation because I was open to helping the city resolve the situation. I said to you, let's get a roundtable meeting with Caltrans, the city engineer, the city council, one or two of them, yourself, my engineers, planning engineers, staff, and work out with people that have the authority to resolve it, and you said, no, you were going to do it yourself. I have not received any information or communication from you, Josh, resolving the situation since that meeting last year or follow-up letters since. I am again going to request that you put together the meeting to get everyone in the room and resolve the situation for the benefit of the city and the community. The city has collected $3,385.85 in traffic fees on every permit at O'Shaughnessy Village. The city has issued 2,340 permits over the past 10 years, which is about $8 million in traffic and impact fees. Where is the money? I want to talk to you about O'Shaughnessy Village Park. The city has collected approximately $7,450 per permit for the park acquisition and park development fees times 151 permits. The city has also collected almost $17 million in the past 10 years for park acquisition development. Where are the parks? O'Shaughnessy Village has been completed for approximately three years. Councilman Begonia, that's your area, that is your district. What takes so long to get the park built? The city has yet to pay for the land and the improvements that have been done so far on the park, bringing water, electricity, grading, and more. It's time to move forward and resolve the situation. The city doesn't own the land. The next item is the entrance to Vineyard Drive on Highway 165 on the north side of town. The connection has not been completed. It was designed to be built years ago by the city, and they collected money on every home to be built there and has yet to be completed. Josh, you need to get the job done because the liability to the city may be in the event that someone in the subdivision over 1,000 homes cannot access the highway in an emergency response to go to the hospital, Modesto, Turlock, Merced, or emergency services, which would be a great disservice if someone died. It was required in a traffic study for safety and traffic flow on every permit. There was a traffic fee paid by the residents and a traffic fee in addition to that of over $1 million. That subsidy was complete well over 10 years ago. Councilman Lambert, that's your district. The city has received approximately $10 million in COVID money to spend it on
Thirty cents.
As they wish, as I understand, on anything they wish. Where is the money going? These people have been waiting, there is a meeting being set up next week with myself, the city attorney, and my legal counsel to move forward and hopefully resolve some of these situations I have been talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Lannister, council. Chris Sanz Santos here representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. The congressman was honored to have the opportunity to join Chief Paul Twala and the Los Manos Fire Department for their annual pancake breakfast fundraiser, and the congressman would also like to wish everyone in this chamber a happy Women's History Month. Congressman Duarte recently led a bipartisan letter to Commissioner Robert Kaliff of the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, encouraging the FDA to reconsider expediently the addition of valley fever to the current list of tropical diseases that qualify for a priority review voucher. Valley fever is an infectious fungal disease that can be severe or even deadly, with approximately 200 deaths occurring each year. Given that the vast majority of infections occur in only certain parts of Arizona and California, particularly the southern San Juanquin Valley, the disease is particularly concerning to our constituents in CD-13. Nationally, however, valley fever is considered a rare disease. According to the CDC, in 2019, there were 20,000 reported cases of valley fever. As is often the case for rare diseases, there have not been sufficient market incentives to encourage recent development of products for the treatment or prevention of valley fever. Moreover, the off-label use of certain antifungals to combat the disease is associated with various significant adverse effects to health. From our understanding, the FDA should be able to qualify valley fever as part of the tropical disease PRV program due to it being an infectious disease for which there is no significant market in developed nations and its disproportionate effect on poor and marginalized populations. In 2015, the FDA issued an order explaining the factors used to designate diseases for this list. It is our understanding that valley fever prevalence in the United States is below the threshold set by the FDA for this program, which indicates a lack of a significant market to support the development of new treatments and a vaccine, in addition to its disproportionate impacts on marginalized populations, according to data from the CDC and other public health organizations. In light of the current standard of care, there is now a critical need for improved products. Congressman Duarte believes that an incentive in the form of a priority review voucher would provide necessary interest and investment. Accordingly, the congressman is requesting that the FDA review any and all new information related to valley fever and make a new determination on adding this disease to the PRV program, consistent with congressional direction, so we can stamp out this threat to the health of valley families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Christopher Lavelia, L-A-V-E-G-L-I-A, I'm with Santos Ford. I'm here to speak regarding the city of Los Manos website. There's currently a listing for Public Works invitation for sealed bids for 24 Suburban and for two Chevy Terverses. I, I feel that it appears to me that the city has blackballed me from doing business with the city. Previously, whenever there was a bid on your website, I was emailed by Public Works saying, hey, Chris, there's a bid out, you need to bid on it. There was a bid that I won for a Ford Expedition, and I ordered it, received the purchase order, and in the bid I put that it would tentatively take 240 to 270 days. And things out of my control, there was an autoworker strike, there was constraints to the supply chain, the vehicle just happened to arrive last week. It was canceled on December 7. So now my question is to the city, how come I'm no longer being afforded bids and notified? Another question for the city is, the only dealership in town is a Ford dealership, why are you bidding Chevrolets? My other question is, the last vehicles that I sold to the city of Los Manos, I sold six trucks with utility bodies on them. I won the bid, and I was $18,740.48 cheaper than the out-of-town Chevrolet dealer. And another question I have for the city, does the city still abide to Section 3-10.320, local business preference? Is that still a city ordinance? On that bid I won, I didn't need the extra 5% because I won the bid, but, and another thing, the police department and the fire department don't do things by sealed bid. The police department did one time on a sealed bid, which I won, and I delivered the vehicle. And recently, the fire department had me, oh, you left, price a pickup, and I never heard back if I got it or not, if anybody priced against me. I'm wondering why those entities aren't under sealed bids. And my other question is, are you providing oversight of what's going on on these bids and things? Don't you have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers' money? It seems to me it's just, hey, you know, I couldn't deliver that vehicle, and now I'm blackballed, like I said, and I have copies of And I have copies of previous emails where they email me saying, hey, we have an invitation to bid. I have a copy of the bid where I put tentative very clearly, and I have the bid results of the six trucks showing that I was the low man and I saved the city money. And now I just, I don't understand why you're not doing business with me anymore, being that I'm local. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm Pastor Raoul Granio with Mercy Springs Church at the Nazarene on the corner of Santa Barbara and Mercy Springs. I just want to let you know that on April fourth, we're going to be having, working with Civic, the Central Valley Immigration Network, and we're going to be having a free workshop that'll include DACA renewal and citizenship for those who are looking to work on their immigration. We'll have lawyers on site as well as accredited representatives that can help with all of these for, for very little cost. It'll be on a, on a slight scale or even free in some situations, but we just want to make sure that our community has access to these things. So if you know somebody who needs help with any kind of immigration issues, they can reach out to us. We'll have something on our website pretty soon at msnaz.org, but come check it out and find out and pass it out so we can start helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marion Santos. I'm the owner of Santos Ford, Tiscano RV, and Los Banas Chevron. Anyway, what I wanted to talk to the city council about is we sell all our vehicles. Dos Palace buys all their vehicles from me. Fireball buys all their vehicles from me. Merced County bought over forty Fords last year from me because I won the bid. The sheriff department bought over twenty-five vehicles from me, but yet the city of Los Banas, my hometown, where my mom was born here in nineteen twenty, and we're like third generation, my grandfather came over in eighteen eighty-five, and we need your support. But yet, they seem to want to buy Chevrolets or GMCs or something else. And then if there's a warranty problem, they got to take two people out of town, and then to go pick it up, they got to take two people. So that's costing the city more money. And all these vehicles are about the same. They all break down when they're stressful, no matter what kind of vehicle you got. I had a, a friend of mine that wanted to buy a Toyota, and so I took him the Merced Toyota. And there was thirty vehicles being worked on, and there are transmissions out and different things. So they're all about the same, but we need your support. And, and for us to stay in business, I did approximately seventeen point five million dollars in business last year, Santos Ford. And if we can't make it, we're going to close up, and you guys are going to lose the sales tax revenue, you know? And it's been a struggle, believe me. I used to sell eighty cars a month, and I'm down to twenty to twenty-five cars. So it's been a real struggle. Tiscano RV has been supporting Santos Ford, or else it would have been closed up already. So we need all the support we could get, and I'd appreciate if you guys had looked at that and tried to buy locally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle with the executive, I'm the executive director for the Los Banas Chamber of Commerce. It's very nice to see all of you. I'm going to be taking over for a previous director that used to come and talk, so I'll be trying to get here and do this. You all know this isn't my favorite. I don't know how to do this very well, so bear with me again. Just a couple updates. The chamber hit, after the holiday, we had a blackout and our servers crashed, and we lost everything, and we've been trying to get up and running again since then. So we just got our system back up and running at the beginning of this week, so it's been a little crazy at the office, but we're still pushing on, we're still getting ready for all of our events, the Spring Street Fair, and we have partnered up with the Downtown Association to do the St. Patrick's Day Pub Crawl, so we are moving forward with that as well. We, we are continuing all of our events that we normally have a year, the Spring Street Fair, Fall Street Fair, the Halloween trunk retreat, and it's made a festival with the, and the Christmas parade. We are not going to be having our Father's Day Car Show anymore for some reasons. We're not going to be doing that one, and we are in the process of figuring out what's going to happen. We might not be attending the Spring May Day Fair with our beer, but so that's still kind of up in the air, hopefully. Yes, so we are always accepting new members, new directors. I am looking for new directors, so if you know anybody that would like to be a director, or if there's any business leaders here today that would like to be a director, please come speak with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Marybo Garcia, speaking on behalf of the Los Banas Downtown Association. Actually, we're having our merchant event meeting tomorrow. It's going to be at five thirty, Biggins Texas Barbecue, six oh nine I Street. Please be there. It's so important that the merchants do show up. I can't express how important it is. We really want to hear your feedback, and overall, we want to see you there. And yes, overall, March seventeenth, San Patrick's Pub Crawl. We're so excited to be partnering up with the Chamber of Commerce. And I did bring a flyer for you guys as well. The tickets are thirty dollars. You can get them at the Downtown Association. You could also get them at the Chamber of Commerce and we, on our website as well. We also have a square link on our flyer. We have twelve merchants actually participating, so we're so excited. We will be having live music. I Street will be shut down between Fifth and Seventh Street, so please come out and support, and we'll see you crawl away. And overall, we really want to take a time to thank the staff for all your help and also council for all your help. Thank you for all your support, and thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening and hope to see you March seventeenth. Bye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, members of the public, good evening. First off, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce a, an event that's happening on Friday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-fourth. This is a welcome home to our Vietnam veterans. Vietnam era is from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen seventy-five. As you well know, many of our veterans, majority of our veterans, did not receive a good welcome home from their time serving overseas. So this is a way for this organization, the Central Valley, Central California Veterans Organization, to continuously tell veterans from this era, the Vietnam veterans, thank you and welcome home. This will be happening over at the Veterans Pavilion Park, North Buahak Road, Atwater. Don't know how to pronounce that. Buahak, thank you very much. Again, this is Friday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-fourth. This is a free event to all veterans, families, and general public, so hopefully, if you're in Dario, if you'd like to come by, show support, we really appreciate it. Folks, we've got a lot of problems here in town. Had a lot of speakers here articulate some of the problems that they're having, and it all relates to management. There's a serious problem with management, the relationship between management and those managed, and it's, and it's starting to affect, it's starting to spill over into people's lives, people's businesses, and to the city's future. I hope that you take this time to reflect upon the decisions you made, the decisions you have made, and the manner in which you've discharged your duties. One of those is specifically having public input before you make a decision. The taxpayers are footing the bill. They should be part of the decision-making process at every step. I know it takes a long time. I know that you'd like to have a short meeting, but that's not how this, our republic was designed. It was designed to have people participate in the decision-making process, ask questions, get responses, ask some more questions. I know you don't want to have a lot of meetings, but that's, that's our republic was designed. Again, the, the issues with management, again, it's, it's, it's not necessarily the manager's fault, the city manager's fault, it's responsibility of the city council. He's doing what he's allowed to do ostensibly, and it's city council's responsibility to direct and to correct where necessary. Again, Mr. Panera has a lot of energy, he has a lot of drive, but I'll just leave it at that. Again, it's the city council's responsibility, and I hope you will take a more proactive approach to the issues affecting our city, our employees, and, as mentioned now, our business partners, which seem to be getting cut out of the loop. I hope, again, that you take this time to reflect upon how you've conducted yourselves, the decisions you've made, and how you've made them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public forum? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public forum. Move on to item seven, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two, four, three, seven, seven, seven to two, four, three, nine, eight, five, and the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents. City Council Resolution Number six, seven, four, one, to delegate authority to the city manager to undertake certain actions to commence and complete the real property transactions for the Ortega Lita Road slash Pioneer Road intersection improvement project. City Council Resolution Number six, seven, four, two, ratifying the city manager's approval of the employment agreement with the finance director, Vanessa Portillo. City Council Resolution Number six, seven, four, three, accepting the two thousand and twenty-three street rehabilitation project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with, with the Merced County Recorder, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Do I have any items requested to be removed for discussion by council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to pull item seven B as in boy, C as in Charles, and D as in David.
All right, seven B, C, and D. Do I have anything else from any other members of the council? All right, so let's start with seven B. For this, we'll go to Public Works Director, City Engineer Burksen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item seven B is an authorization of the city manager to undertake certain actions to commence and complete the final property transactions for the improvement to the intersection of Ortega Lita and Pioneer Road, the intersection. This authorizes the city manager to undertake all actions to commence and complete the real property transactions for Ortega Lita and Pioneer. And we have sent letters out to all the contiguous property owners that will help the intersection, widen the intersection and improve it. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, my first question would be, could you give us a little bit of history that leads up to why this is going to be widened? Does it have anything to do with the widening of Pioneer Road in total? Or, you know, historically, why is this happening?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have that much history. Just, just recently got here. My understanding is it is part of the project of widening Pioneer Road for an extended length. This is one part of it, and I think other, my complement members of staff may have more knowledge of it. This is phase one of a, of a broader project to widen Pioneer.
Okay, and in the discussion and analysis, there's a lot of terms like streamlining, streamlining and urgency. So how long has this been on the books to take care of, and why has it become urgent now?
Yes, ma'am, council member. To my understanding, the, the urgency stems from some funds that are due to expire within possibly two or three months. I don't know the prior history. However, the city is prepared to backfill, so to speak, those funds as, as needed to proceed with the project. But it, it has taken some time. This is the state that it's at now, and I, that's the extent of my knowledge, but we still can proceed as planned. A portion of the funding is subject to lapsing, so that, that's the, the reason for the urgency.
And, and I can feel some of this is part of M C A G with Measure V, and it's something that the last two mayors have been working on as well, is this is part of the phasing project for that.
But this is federal and state money, so it's not money coming from M C A G. So my question, maybe someone can help you answer this as to whether or not, how long has this money, have we had this money in possession? And when, and you said the expiration of this funding is within a couple of, two or three months?
So I think I can, I can help with this a little bit. So this, we didn't, we don't have the funding in hand, so there's, there's STIP funds and HIP funds. STIP funds are State Transportation Infrastructure Program, and HIP is the Highway Infrastructure Program. So these were all allocated for regional activities in the two thousand and twenty-one budget year. So these are all in conjunction with M C A G, and M C A G is, is, is really the lead agency in, in terms of, of this regional project. And the reason why we state Measure V is because our large allocation for Measure V on the discretionary side with the, with the M C A G board, forgive, forgive me if I'm saying something out of line, is, is substantial. And so this, this is the runway, so, so getting these right of ways is the runway in order to access these, these other funds. And these other funds will exist of federal funds like C Mac funds and several more discreet allocations from Measure V for the whole purpose of widening this Measure V project. This is, I think, the only regional project that Los Banos has with M C A G. So the reason why this took a little while is that this was teed up, I think, at the beginning or towards the end of last year, and we had a little bit of turnover in terms of our Public Works Department. So we just got back on it. Mark Thomas, our consultants, put, put all of this together and, and this package together and presented it, or will be presenting it to, to the property owners, and that will create the runway and an R F A for, for the accessing these, these STIP and HIP monies. They're, they're not large allocations for this purpose, but once we are able to clear this hurdle, so to speak, it opens up the runway for the finishing up of the R F A and the design side working in through Ortega Lita down that way as, as we work to work through the utility side of this, because that, that's the first, the first piece of this. So that, that's, that's kind of a really quick history of this. I, I can't say why it languished prior to Chuck being here. I think that that was another direction, so, but I, I do believe that there's, there's remedies to, to continue this and overcome the hurdle. As Chuck was saying, there's self-certification that, that can be done, and some other things that aren't really necessarily reliant on Caltrans, but we were going through the Caltrans process because that STIP money is, is there in order to pay for these right of ways. And, and it's a, it's, it's a reimbursement process, so we're not holding on to this cash at the moment.
Well, there, there are phases of funding for the widening of Pioneer Road, and I know that if it's not done within the period of time, then that money goes back to M C A G slash state federal government, and they'll allocate it to some other project. So when is the expiration on this money?
On, on, on the, the STIP money? The STIP money is, is most likely going to expire July, June or July or September? June. Yes. Yeah, so, right, right. So is this, it's said in the staff report, doesn't it?
No, it does not.
Yeah, so, so, so we're, we're bringing this, and the reason why there's a little truncated time on this is time on this is our goal is to get this package to, by April, in order to access the STIP funds. Now, once we have that and the RFA is completed, then the smaller, well, the next allocation of HIP, which is a federal, will open up for that purpose, and that's on the utilities. And I don't want to speak for the engineers and for the planners and everything like this. I'm strictly giving you my knowledge from the financing side of things. But yes, so, but we have been meeting with MCAG and the executive director several times and the county regarding this, because some of it encroaches on county sphere of influence. So we've been, we've been working with MCAG. MCAG is cognizant of these hurdles, and they're working with us in order to maintain our discrete funding with MCAG, which I think is currently at like eight or nine million, but that will, that will get larger as we go through the different phases of construction.
Well, I, you know, I don't know where the blame lies. I know that this project has, was proposed by this council, not this sitting council, but another sitting council some time ago, and you're saying that MCH funded it in '21, and here we're, you know, in 2024, and we're just now taking action on something because we're about to lose the money. And it's important to widen that Pioneer corridor. We originally approved it to be a four-lane corridor, and then it came back to us without reason to cut it down to two lanes. Well, it's already a two-lane road, so it looks like all we're going to be doing is repaving a two-lane road, and our highway is encumbered. 152 is encumbered with a lot of traffic. And the sole purpose of bringing that around was a bypass to get traffic off of 152 and let trucks and traffic get from one side of town to continue east without stopping through all the stoplights in our downtown area. So I hope we continue to move forward with this project in an appropriate manner, in a timely manner, and, you know, not have a situation like this where we're squeezed on time and have to make a decision like this without looking at the total picture. I still haven't seen any mockups of what we're going to do on the Pioneer corridor. We had some renderings that were possibilities back when Mark Fajian was our Public Works Director, but beyond that, I haven't seen anything. And I think it's time that we look at not just the engineering, but what is this project going to look like in the long run. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done with that one.
All right. Let's move on to item seven C. For this, we'll go to City Manager Panero.
Okay, well, we're asked to approve this selection tonight, but what I see in the report is generally what the scale level is, that's been requested of the employee, the salary, and, you know, the various benefits that are going to be given to the employee. But just as it was when we hired the new Public Works Director, I'd certainly like to have some information about this employee and know a little bit about her background that you can share with us.
Sure. Myself and the team, we're excited to have Vanessa join us here at the City of Los Banos. She has worked in city government for well over 10 years, worked in multiple cities. She's worked City of Lathrop, worked for the county in Stanislas, and worked for the City of Livingston. She has gone through an extensive interview process with myself and the entire team, and myself along with the entire team, we have felt she'd be a good team member for us here at the city and be a good partner for us and for the citizens of this town. So we're excited to have Vanessa join the team.
And in those cities that you've mentioned, could you share with us what her job title was?
Sure. She was Finance Manager roles and Finance Director roles.
In all of those cities?
Finance Manager in some, one city, Finance Director in another city.
Which city was she, the Finance Director?
Finance Director in Livingston.
Okay, is the candidate here tonight?
No.
Was she invited to come?
Candidate, well, her first day of work is March 11th.
Was she invited to come?
I had asked her, her first day of work is March 11th, so no, she was not asked.
Was she asked to come to council?
She was not asked to come.
I'm going to ask councilmember, why is that question relevant?
He didn't answer the question.
I'm asking you, why is that question relevant?
Because it's important to me.
Did you reach out and ask him that ahead of time? Because we can't read minds. If you wanted a candidate to be, I think you would have.
You know, you know, Mr. Mayor, that this city manager will not communicate with me, so don't ever ask me that question again.
Did you reach out to our city manager? That's my question to you.
He's not going to talk to me.
It's a yes or no question.
It's a, no, I didn't. And I'm not going to reach out to him because he's not going to communicate with me. So I would, you know, I would hope that the candidate would have been here tonight to, so that he can introduce her. That's historically how we handle things.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, did you relay that that's your expectation?
You're trying to make me look bad, and I've already shared with you that he does not communicate with me.
Councilmember, I'm not.
So no, I've answered that question.
I merely stating, if there's an expectation, that needs to be communicated.
There's an expectation as a city council member that I should be treated like you, Councilmember Jones, Begonia, and Councilmember Ken Lambert, but I'm not. So there's your answer. Okay, I'm done with that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to seven D.
Okay, my question on this one is, when I read the report, there's, there's mention in the report about, you know, Birch's rehab, but in the total packaging of all the streets that were named above, Overland, San Luis, B Street, Badger Flat, Cardoza, is there a reason why Birch was not included in that? Because it was a complete project.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't know why Birch was not included. Birch was part of the project.
It was a change order.
Yeah, it was in the change order number five. I do recall, looking at earlier council reports in December, change order five did include Birch, Birch Street.
So is, because it was a change order, is it going to be added in as part of what is going to be submitted to Merced County as completion of roads, roads that have been completed for rehab?
Yes.
Okay. I know that it wasn't in the original bid, and certainly I had concerns about that and brought it to the attention of our council. So I just want to make sure that that was, it was clear, since that wasn't in the, what, four or five streets that were mentioned. Okay. Okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am. The staff has pointed out in the notes of completion, Birch Avenue was listed.
All right, thank you.
All right. Do we want to vote on, have a motion to vote on the consent agenda? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as now has been read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Let's move on to item eight, Peninsula Clean Energy Presentation. This will go to Community Economic Director Suzanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the privilege of introducing Sean Marshall. She is the Chief Executive Officer of Peninsula Clean Energy, and she is going to give you a presentation tonight on some updates and some information about Peninsula Clean Energy. Take it away, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the invitation to come and provide an update on the activities of Peninsula Clean Energy and the benefits that we are bringing to your residents and businesses here in the City of Los Banos. I'm going to be as brief as I can, but feel free to stop and ask any questions if need be. So I want to just start off by introducing my colleagues who are here. We have Mark Hirschman, I think many of you have met. Mark is our Director of Government Affairs, and we have Vidi Renteria, who is our new Community Outreach Specialist based here in Los Banos. I also want to acknowledge you, Mayor Paul Yanis, for your great leadership on our Board of Directors. We really appreciate that. I do want to also recognize Josh Panero for engaging with us and figuring out how to leverage the programs we have for the benefit of your community. And last but not least, I really do want to recognize Stacy Elms, who, when we met, was Stacy Souza. And without her, I don't believe I would be standing here giving this presentation. And do appreciate your ongoing liaison to our staff to make sure that things continue to remain on track. I'm going to show a brief video and then run through, you know, four or five slides and be done. But the very first thing that I want to start out with here tonight is to reassure you that providing affordable rates is priority one for us right now. We have a name called Peninsula Clean Energy. We live by that. That is the, you know, the fabric of who we are, but we are well aware of the skyrocketing energy costs, and we are doing our part to offer as deep savings as we can to all of our customers here and in San Mateo County. The good news is that Peninsula Clean Energy knows how to do many things well. So that means that we are able to go back and redouble our efforts to lower our rates while also continuing to provide clean energy and meet all of our decarbonization goals that are important to the state of California. So with that, I want to roll video. Stacy, if you wouldn't mind, and then I'll come back and we'll do some highlights and I'll be done.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal: to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94% while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our community since 2016.
In the past year, we have secured our largest wing contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part, because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings. So with Peninsula Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed, and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom-and-pop housing providers, that's really, really important to us, because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve.
Okay, thank you so much for watching that. Now we'll shift into the slides. Let's see.
Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016.
There you go. Thank you so much. Let's make sure that works here. Yep, okay. All righty. So I mentioned at the top of the meeting that affordable rates is our number one priority, and I do want to say that we have heard our customers loud and clear. And so what we have been able to do, first time ever, and Mary Yanis did cast his vote as well, is that we have frozen our rates at 2023 levels. Unfortunately, we do not have anything to say about what PG&E does with its own rates. You might recall that our piece of it is just the electric generation portion, but it still can add up. And so we are now, especially here in Los Banos, anywhere between 10% and 18% lower than if a customer was receiving electric generation from PG&E. And that is a significant savings that we actually hope to continue through, hopefully the remainder of this year. We are also looking at our rate design to more closely match our rate setting with our cost to serve, and there will be more on that, Mary Yanis, at our next board meeting, actually. We also support home electrification, and one of our most popular programs, and one that I want to make sure everybody in the community is aware of, is our $10,000 zero percent down loan. It is a 0% interest rate, excuse me. It is simple, it's one page, there's no credit check, it is a 10-year payback period, and anyone who is a Peninsula Clean Energy customer can receive one of these loans. They've been hugely popular. What they're used for is any kind of a energy-related retrofit on your home that would replace fossil fuel with, for example, heat pump water heater, heat pump HVAC, and the like. The program has taken off. We've issued well over 400 loans just in one year, and we're allocating additional budget to it. Next up, PCE supports the transition to clean transportation. We do this through a number of programs, and one thing I want to call out that was in the video is we are supporting a number of multifamily existing apartment buildings to put in clean energy charging at an affordable rate, and in many cases, almost zero cost. And there are customers that we have, many of whom may be economically disadvantaged in renting, and that is a way to serve a market that has been generally underserved so far. We also have a very popular EV rebate, e-bikes open to all customers. One thing that'll be important to you, or many things, but we have a number of programs to partner with our local governments in the areas of advancing climate action plans, if you have these. We have a government, GovPV, program, which the City of Los Banos is very involved in. You have two projects actually forthcoming. One is a carport on your community center, and the other is a solar project at your wastewater treatment plant. We're hoping to break ground on those very soon, and those will be saving you millions of dollars over the course of a 20-year time span. We also have a couple of new funding opportunities. One is our local government electrification program. Those are grants and loans available to our local government members to do energy-related retrofits. We also have a new member agency energy grant program that allocated a certain amount of grant money to each of our member jurisdictions based on the size of your load and customers. So I do want to acknowledge that Moises Lomelli, in, I believe, your Buildings Department, did attend a briefing that we had, and the money allocated for Los Banos is $422,000. There is an application process, and I know you'll be moving forward on that soon. And then just to wrap up here pretty quickly, a number of Los Banos highlights. Hopefully, you got the letter that we sent through that also articulated some of these stats. But I think it's important to know that you guys have about 14,000 customers currently served by PCE with about a 90% participation rate, and that represents about 5% of our overall load. Since 2022, when we went live with the City of Los Banos, your constituents have saved over $3.2 million on their utility bills, and that is just the electric generation portion, just to... portion, just to remind you. But at the end of the day, that is money back in their pockets to spend in a different way. This does include a recent $300 rebate that we offered to our Care Fair customers. That is an income-qualified program. There were rebate credits on the customer's bill in December and January of this year. And that also, I do want to acknowledge your mayor for really leading on that effort in the last several months. I mentioned already the two solar projects that we have underway here in town. And I also want to say that we have, your residents have availed themselves of a little bit over $600,000 in various loans, rebates, and et cetera that I have already discussed. So coming forward in this year, we did just issue a community reinvestment package of $68 million that allocates funding across a number of programs, including the local government funding. We have enhanced programs to make electrification of homes and transportation easier and more affordable for our customers. We are pushing to shift to 100% clean energy and remain at deeply discounted rates, so that would not be at an extra charge. And we have now shifted into really looking at everything we do through the eyes of our customers and what our customers need first. So with that, I will wrap up, say thank you from our team to yours. It's been delightful to work with you and here to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have any questions from council? Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Yes, you mentioned that there are two solar projects that you're working with. Could you address those and let our community know what those projects are and when they'll be going forward?
Yes, so there's, they are Peninsula Clean Energy-owned generation projects. Your council approved the power purchase agreements, the contracts, for those, I think in the fall of last year, but I can find out exactly what date it was. So thank you for that. And there's a carport that's going to be installed at your community center with solar panels on top of that carport. And then there's going to be a ground-mounted solar rooftop at your wastewater treatment plant. Those projects right now are making their way through both your Public Works Department and PG&E. PG&E is required to actually go live on those projects. So we're hoping that those will actually be, will do ribbon cutting, and those will be done sometime this year.
But there's no date or timeframe for the ribbon cutting for those two?
I wish I had one for you, but it's just sort of contingent upon other agencies, not our own. But we will certainly keep the mayor and city manager updated on that.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you all again soon. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item nine, consideration of adoption of ordinance number 1204, amending Title II, Chapter II, Article 5, Section 2-2.510 of the Los Banos Municipal Code to change the meeting dates and times of the Los Banos Airport Advisory Commission from monthly meetings to quarterly meetings. This will be the second reading and adoption. For this, we'll go to our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Bergson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the second reading of the ordinance from last meeting, changing the airport meeting, Airport Advisory Commission meetings from once a month to once a quarter.
Any questions from council? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones.
All right, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1204 as read by title.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert.
I'll second.
All right. Sorry, Councilmember Begonia, he beat you. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, and then I'm looking for a motion to adopt. Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1204 as read by title.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Oh, got me. All right, roll call vote, please.
Lambert?
Yes.
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yanez?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to item 10, consideration of City Council Resolution 6744, adopting a revised budget for the 2324 fiscal years that pertains to expenditures and revenue. For this, we'll go to Interim Finance Director, Kuhn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. So this review is really to take a little bit of time to pause and see if our assumptions that we made at the beginning of the year for the general budget was accurate, how close, whether or not the estimates have changed. Our approved budget was predicated a little bit on some austerity, not really knowing what the economic future was going to hold, whether or not there was a recession at hand or what. So as I went through this and I looked at the, all of the accounts, every single line item, a trend started developing. First, let's explain, this is a time we can take an in-depth look kind of at the financial position. Mostly, we focus on the general fund because that's the discretionary fund of the council. And we review our financial statements, our general ledger, to see if our spending is in line with the appropriations that were approved, or whether or not there was things that took place, whether it be price pressures on certain items within that account string that we have to change said adjustments or said accounts, sorry. And those accounts are usually predicated on certain assumptions, and those mid-year adjustments for all the city funds are represented in Exhibit A of the staff report. So as we went through the estimates that were generated, we're really, again, focused on the general fund and really just focused on the general fund's major revenues. And those major revenues, of course, are sales tax, property tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle licensing fees, permits, and interest. And usually, we include just all cost of money or all assets that generate income, that being land or rentals or otherwise. But we do have, we do have a line item with that, but that one is pretty static and doesn't change. So these were the areas that were sensitive to any estimates that we made at the beginning of the year. So I'll take a second to kind of go through that. And for sales tax, we budgeted almost 6.8 million. As I'm looking through the sales tax remittances through the first part of the year and projecting that out, those projections look more like close to $7 million, so 6.97. So we're projecting a surplus or being over budget on that revenue of close to $200,000. Property taxes is the most surprising for me, and one of the reasons why this mid-year review happens at this time of year is because we're always waiting on that first remittance from the county. And it came back very, very positive for the first remittance. It was much greater than the previous year. And I've projected out, again, that to be, well, we budgeted 6.38 million and projecting that out to close to $7 million, and that surplus is close to $650,000. Property tax in lieu of vehicle, again, there's the old triple flip of this monies and the stuff that we did with the state. That one generated $265,000 of surplus, and we received that remittance twice a year. Permits was a very surprising one, and it also generated part of, I think, the majority of the dollar amount of our amendments to the mid-year budget. And that was that, as of the date, as of today, we budgeted $500,000, excuse me, and we have over $1 million in permits that we've received. And then interest, and then interest has been more of a change in direction of management and finance to try to leverage our assets. So basically, our cash on hand, when I first got in here, a majority of the cash was deposited in checking, making no money, and now we've gone. And we've really taken advantage of the inverse relationship of the yield curve. So that means that short-term financing is getting higher yields than long-term financing. So it's actually been very beneficial. So we have, we've, to the extent of not jeopardizing liquidity to the city, we've put a lot of these investments in these short-term investments. And that's generated a considerable surplus of, you know, close, and it might be greater depending on how interest rates play out the remainder of the year, but it could be between 850 and $1 million. So it's been very strong in terms of those areas. So within the general fund, the expenditure side and the cost is very important, and of course, the appropriations that are approved by that, we manage that, and we are very, very cognizant of keeping costs down and utilizing anything that we can to get economies of scale and whatnot there. So as we go through the major functions of the city, the administration side, we had a budget of 2.5 million. Right now, as of January, the end of January, we have almost a million, and we projected that out. So that major city function is currently under budget, considerably under budget. Community economic development, building and engineering, oh, sorry, I'm reading it. Thank you, appreciate it. So that's kind of all combined together, and again, those functions are sensitive, predicated on technical services that are attached to the permit revenue. But as you can see, we budgeted about 4.3 million there. Currently, it's just under 2, and I'm projecting that out to be about 3.4 million. So again, under budget. Safety, which includes police-fire code enforcement, dispatch, we budgeted about 16 million. Right now, it's at 9.2, and projecting that out to just under 16. That's closer to being right on budget, but still projecting to be under. Recreation and maintenance, we mine those two together because their functions deal with a lot of the parks within the city. That doesn't really have a whole lot of sensitivity in terms of savings. Those are fixed, a lot of those are fixed costs. And so we budgeted 2.7. Right now, we're at about 1.5, and we're projecting out just under that 2.7 at 2.66. So the total fund expenditures on the general government side, general fund, we budgeted about 25.5 million. We are currently at 13.6, and we're projecting that out to be substantially under budget. And again, some of these items were relating to one-time cost items that have not yet been done, so that could increase. But most likely, with the assumptions that I've built into this, I highly anticipate that those expenditures are going to be under $24 million. So, thank you. On the revenue side, the budgeted revenues is about 23 million in the general fund, and the projected increases to revenues, I've, again, tempered some of the areas that we haven't received any revenue yet, and so it was difficult to project those out. So this is a very conservative estimate of close to 1.5 million over that budget. So we're projecting to be over budget or create a surplus. And that brings us to about 24.6 million, and the projected expenditures and transfers is about 23.4. So we're projecting very conservatively that, again, we're going to have an operating surplus as we've carried the last couple of years now. So the news has been, was quite encouraging, and I wasn't as confident as this until I got the property tax revenue remittance, and then everything kind of came around. So now, on the cash and investment side of things, I just, I wanted to give more of a citywide approach to this because in some cases, some of the funds, like the police construction funds, which we were still burning cash for the police department in the tune of about $6 million this year, since the beginning of the year, we've increased our cash and investments in citywide over $1 million. So even with that kind of spending that we have done, and we've done some other, you know, overlay projects, and we've done, and we're working on the wastewater treatment. So there's been, there's been some big-ticket items, and we're still in a cash position that was actually quite surprising. So good job on all the departments in terms of really managing their costs the way they have been. So on Exhibit A, there's a listing of adjustments. And most of these adjustments are really true-ups in terms of where I would, I went through every single account string and picked out an assumption parameter of a percentage left that I felt comfortable there would be no overages. Now, from a total appropriation standpoint, we're golden, but in terms of how I feel about appropriations and line items, I thought it would be best to address those line items that could have some difficulty at the end of the year. So I'm happy to go through each line item if you wish, but what I really wanted to do is just highlight the big-ticket items. So in the general fund, the big increase was 375 grand, and that was an increase in appropriations for, basically, in the building side of things. In the CSG contracts, it's tied to permit revenues. So those permit revenues increase there. It doesn't increase commensurate with that because there's a percentage that's relating to this, but we still had to make sure that on the appropriations side, we could pay their bills, even though it's a net gain to the city in regards to this activity. We wanted to increase appropriations on the Nora Jones sidewalk improvements because our great, wonderful, up-and-coming, golden child of Public Parks and Rec. Director thinks that that needs to, you know, be done. So I believe, I believe in that 100%. And so, and then early on in the year, the water fund, we had about $200,000 because we were test drilling for well number 16. It kind of didn't turn out the way we wanted to, but there was a subcontractor cost that was relating to that. The former Public Works Director ran through a task order, and it really wasn't an on-call thing, so I wanted to bring that to this mid-year to make sure that, you know, everything was okay there. And then on the wastewater side, there was $70,000 increase in appropriations for wastewater treatment, pre-treatment program assessment. So, and that was given to me by the Public Works Department. Apparently, that is something that is needed before the end of the year. I'm happy to go through any and all of these one by one if you wish, but for the sake of time and everybody's attention span, I'll take your questions, and we can go from there.
All right. Questions from council? Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Could you explain to me what the Nora Jones sidewalk improvement plan is, and where is it located?
It's just a typo. It's Officer Noah Jones ballpark there at Seventh Street. It's the park there next, just south of the fire station number one there on Seventh Street. And the project there, we'll hopefully be bringing to council here in the next couple council meetings as far as the bid approval award of that construction project. The project itself will include a U-shaped sidewalk, which will complete a full loop around the ballpark. As you're probably aware, there's the four ballfields there. There's currently a sidewalk on the south side of the ballpark that allows access along the bathroom and that south side of the ballpark, but we're trying to connect to provide ADA compliance throughout the park. As well, there'll be a small fence that runs along, a three-foot fence that runs along the parking lot to prevent children from running into the parking lot between games.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Any other questions or comments? No questions, comments?
I, I'll, I'll just say that this is outstanding news, right? I mean, the amount of money that we've spent to do things and the amount of improvements that we're seeing citywide, and then to tell us at the end of the day that you're actually making money while doing this, I mean, this is, yeah, this is outstanding news. So, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right. Sure. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to know, I, um, I think under our, uh, ordinance for the city of Los Manos that, uh, we're required to have thirty percent, uh,
Yes.
of our expenditures on an annual basis in reserve. Are we still, are we still at that?
Yes. Yeah, so, so, uh, you recall, I came to the council and committed, uh, funds for the DSC. And, and even with the committed funds and, and what I project out to this, uh, we're s- we're still going to be upwards in, in the eighty, ninety percent, um, of, of next, next year's appropriated expenditures of fund equity position.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And I understand there's no, uh, no action to be taken on this side of just information.
Oh, yeah, there's a resolution.
Oh. Councilmember Jones.
Brent Coon, got a question. Uh, prior years, what would be our estimated reserves that we'd have as far as percentage-wise? Um, we're close to ninety, eighty-nine?
Well, so,
Are we even higher or have we been lower?
Well, so, so before I committed those funds, um, and it, and if I hadn't for that purpose, we would be pushing close to a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty percent. It, it, it's still stronger than, and it's, again, the, the thirty percent is, is for unrestricted. So, so even within, uh, the unrestricted, uh, portion, we are very, very strong. So to compare it to last year, I would say it's, it, it, as far as if I were to include that commitment from into last year, we will be better this year. Does that make sense?
So, so looking back a few years, we've been progressing better?
Yeah, well, that, so here, herein lies the greatest problem of government, right? Is that you're, you're making money, but yet you should be spending it because it's for the service of the community, right? Not to sit and, you know, have like a big portfolio. So, yeah, my, my goal would be that we got closer to that thirty percent than where we are now and, you know, a, a, allow things to happen for, for, for the community. I don't know, is that answering your question?
No, that's the question. It sounds like we're very healthy.
Yes.
So it contradicts some of the stuff that's been out there and, uh, it's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah. I only, I only live in, in the GL world and, and the real world here, so I don't, I can't, I can't make comment on that.
No, perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a, a motion on this resolution? Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, accept resolution number six seven four four as read.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Move on to item eleven, advisement of public notices. I understand we have two reports. Go to Community Economic Development Director ends.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the first item is to consider a revision to a previously approved site plan. Uh, the proposed project is located on the northeast corner of Ward Road and Pacheco Boulevard. Um, this is for legacy development and, um, their project consists of a fuel station and convenience store. Um, and there's a revision to their site plan that they're requesting. The second is for mobile food vendor Hugo Olivera Cortez doing business as Olivera's Pandulse Mexicano. Um, this mobile food vending unit would be, um, operating within the public right-of-way. Uh, both of these public hearings will be held on Wednesday, March thirteenth at six PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you for that. Move on to item twelve, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Um, first, just want to say thank you to, uh, all the team members of the city staff that helped out at Arbor Day. It was a great event. Uh, thank you so much, Joe Heim, you and your team and all the participants throughout, uh, the city that went and helped out and showed up. It was a really nice event to be able to out there and plant some trees. It was over there at Talbot Park near the junior high, is very well attended. Uh, we were blessed that it did not rain extensively, uh, so maybe some light sprinkles of the sort, but we were able to get through it. Uh, so, uh, thank you for all that. Esmeralda Soria was able to, uh, join us there. So that was nice of her, for her to come and, uh, be a part of that event. It's always nice to, uh, take part in those, so that's good. Um, also on March thirtieth, I'd like to let everybody know, we have our egg hunt at Olivera Park. Uh, if you haven't been to that, it's a pretty fun event. Um, get a lot of, uh, kids out there, they like to have fun and a lot of games, uh, bounce houses, so on and so forth. So want to make sure folks are aware of that and hopefully we have good weather for that day. Uh, so that'll be, uh, really good. Um, right now, as we speak, the community center is getting painted. Uh, that is extremely exciting for us. Um, that building, I think, was built around two thousand and eight, I believe, two thousand and nine, and so, um, hasn't been painted since then. And if you go and take a look at it, you can see the stark contrast in the, uh, colors of the new paint to the old paint. So we're really excited about that project being done. Um, over the last couple of weeks or so, we've been doing quite a bit of tree trimming again, um, in areas where trees have just not been trimmed at all. So they're trimming trees all along the, uh, canal trail, all up and down there. A lot of trees are getting trimmed, so it's really helping for that. A lot of trees around the fairgrounds are getting done, some trees on K Street, J Street, I believe, somewhere around there, L Street, uh, no, J and K, uh, exactly. So quite a bit of, uh, tree work is being done there. So really excited with all the work that's being done. As, uh, Joe Heim mentioned, we're working on some, uh, sidewalk, uh, walkway path at the, uh, pow ball field, so really excited about that. So, um, quite a bit of projects that are just continuing to take place. So, um, look forward to those good works and, uh, some of the, and also just continue to look forward to engage with the different, uh, businesses and people here to, uh, continue to resolve and, uh, work on, um, issues that need to be taken care of here in the city. And I know staff has continued to have those conversations and, um, legal teams continue to have those conversations. And, uh, we're, we're, we're working diligently to, uh, continue to try to make progress. Thank you.
All right. Move on to item thirteen, report update. Riverside County Association of Governments, MCG Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and the Los Manos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And we'll start with, uh, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I'd like to report to the community that on March second, the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District, um, sponsored, uh, with, uh, Valley Can, a, uh, tune-up event, uh, at the fairgrounds. And despite the fact that we had heavy rains that morning, we had a, a really good turnout, uh, from the one that we had two years ago. There were two hundred and fifty-eight cars that, uh, went through the line. Of those two hundred and fifty-eight, there were forty, uh, two hundred and forty-three vehicles that were issued vouchers. And this is around people who, whose cars cannot pass smog. And so the vouchers, um, are valued up to five hundred dollars to help them, uh, do any repairs on their vehicles to help them pass smog. Um, of those vehicles that went through, we had an eighty-three point six one percent, uh, that did not pass smog, so, that were not able to pass smog. So it tells you, um, uh, you know, in our community, there, there are a lot of people who can't afford to get their cars fixed. And, um, uh, we have this money that comes down from the state to assist them. And it is, um, income-driven. So, um, I was happy to see that with all these vehicles, that, um, there, there were a lot of vouchers given out, uh, to help, uh, the community, uh, repair their vehicles and pass fog. Uh, there were, uh, of, of the cars that passed, it was sixteen point three nine percent passed, that passed smog. Um, so that's a low rate. Uh, hopefully as time goes on, that will change. Um, there's also a funding allocation available through San Joaquin, um, Air, uh, Pollution Control District. Uh, and it's also income-driven, uh, for people to help purchase new vehicles. And this, the, these would be electrical vehicles, electric vehicles. Um, let's see here. Of, of the people who are interested in replacing their vehicles, uh, it looks like my, my, uh, printer did a little smudge here. Uh, I think there were fifty-eight contacts. Forty people said yes, and twelve people were not interested, and six people did not complete their paperwork properly. Uh, there were fifty-five people who, uh, test drove vehicles, and I was surprised and told that there was even a Tesla out there. So, um, there, there was quite a bit of interest in people who, uh, wanted to tra- uh, transition from combustion vehicles to, um, electric. also for the replacement vehicles, um, the eligibility is for vehicles that are two thousand and six and older. So, uh, those people who have vehicles that are two thousand and six, going back, older vehicles, uh, they would be eligible income-based to apply for the, the, um, grant to purchase a new vehicle. So, uh, that's it on the air pollution control board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Move on to, Uh, only thing, we had a report tonight from PCE. Uh, only thing I have is, uh, with MCG, we are getting ready to do, um, the One Voice Project, um, where we'd be going to Washington DC to represent the city of Los Manos, um, you know, based on our, our federal wants and needs and things that will better our communities. So we're getting ready to, to gear for that trip up in May. So that's all I have for, for MCG. Move on to, uh, item fourteen, city council member reports. Councilmember Lambert? Start with you. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I have, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We can start with Doug if you want, but I have. Okay. Councilmember Lambert?
Uh, I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Coon, great report, uh, you know, and, and all the department heads that put all that together. Uh, you know, it, it's always nice to see that even just quarterly through the year, you know, we're improving. Uh, that's not a lot. You know, I, I, I'm excited, uh, to meet the new finance lady once she gets here. Uh, you know, I do understand that, you know, uh, we're not a part of the hiring, uh, decision on that, but, you know, I'm sure our department heads, city manager do, uh, one heck of a job on the hiring process and that. And I look forward to meeting her possibly on the next meeting. So, and that's all I have to say. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Um, I had a, two Saturdays ago, I got to go out to the fire department and have a breakfast with the fire, um, department. And, um, it's glad to see all the people, the community going out and supporting our, uh, wonderful fire department, all the men and women that make, uh, or keep our community safe. And then, uh, last Friday was at the Arbor Day celebrations, which was fantastic. Joe and his team and all, um, employees of the city that work outside in, in this wind and have successful events and have to deal with this Los Manos wind, uh, and, and manage to, uh, always do great things out there. We were, we appreciate that as a community. Great work, Brent, on the report tonight. And that's it.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to just thank staff for all their hard work lately. I know you guys put in long days and extra hours and it, it's just greatly appreciated. Without you guys, um, the city would not be running as efficiently as what it does and we would not be getting these much-needed improvements and upgrades that we've been getting. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys. Um, I, I really mean that, that we really appreciate everything you guys do for us. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'd just like to say I'm looking forward to the Olivera Park Easter event. Uh, it's in my district and, um, you know, the kids really enjoy themselves. And Joe, you know, when you put out those suds and they, they love to run through that. I think last year, we had a little bit of issue where the wind was up and it, it caused a bit of problem, but the kids still enjoy that. And their rush for the candy, oh my goodness. I think when parents get them home, they're on a real high, uh, after eating all the candy that's thrown out there. So it's, it's a really fun event. Uh, so thank you for putting that on and, and making sure that, that our youth and our kids have something to do around that time. Um, I'm not sure who to pose this question to, um, but, um, in the city manager's contract under performance evaluation, uh, there's a clause that says, "The city shall review and evaluate the performance of the employee annually on or about February twenty-first of each year for the term of the contract." And I'm not sure how that slipped through this year and what happened as to why we didn't have the evaluation.
That's a good question, but we'll ensure it comes up.
Well, it was due on or about February twenty-first, so we're into March now. I mean, um, is the city, and maybe, uh, Mr. Vaughn can answer this, is the city manager supposed to know, notify the, uh, HR director or how does this work?
Um, just briefly, that's a function of the city council to do that evaluation? It's not the HR director's, uh,
No, I didn't, I didn't say her function. I'm saying who is supposed to notify to put it on the agenda so that, that this moves forward? Historically, it's been on the agenda and it's been a closed-session item, but for some reason, we haven't done it this year.
I would say that it would be the city manager's responsibility to, he's, he's responsible for the agenda, um, to get it onto the agenda.
Okay. So I would like to make a request that, um, we move forward to put this on the agenda as soon as possible. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Pushing, pushing all sorts of buttons. All right. Um, so I'll go last. Um, I'll make this brief. You know, one thing just, I'll tell you just that I learned in this meeting tonight is the effective ways of communication. You know, good, bad, or ugly, we got to talk to each other. We have to set. And the people that set up on this dais, our job is to actually create the expectations. Um, and I know that that's something that, again, we represent forty-plus thousand people. So the workflow is the citizens give their expectations to us, we then give it to, right, city staff through the city manager, and that's the workflow that, that we need to do to be successful. Um, just hearing some things tonight that we're obviously not doing that. Um, and again, I've, I've mentioned this before to Councilmember Lewis, if our city manager will not communicate with her, if there's dialogue that's not happening, I need to know about it. Because again, that's part of the effective role, is we have to communicate with each other or we're not going to get, you know, things done. I'm super encouraged that what I'm hearing financially, and I a hundred percent agree that yes, our job is not to build a giant savings account, it's to benefit the citizens of Los Manos. So when a taxpayer spends money, they give it to us, we need to, again, give it back to them in, in the form of, of a service. So the other thing is, you know, comments from the last two meetings, uh, regarding Mr. Hostettler and things with Stonefield, um, I can confirm with you that, that we've had multiple conversations. I have personally have conversations with, with Mr., um, Mr. Hostel. In fact, I had a thirty-minute phone conversation with him two days ago. Um, so there is dialogue in place. And again, it does come down to communication. There's not a good guy, there's not a bad guy. We just need to communicate more and we need to be more effective. Um, but I will say this, the decisions, and I won't speak for any other members of council, the decisions that I make are in for the benefit of forty-plus thousand people, not for a single business owner or developer. That's just not what I'm going to do. It's not what I was elected to do. Um, so again, I know that there's conversations going on. Um, and, and again, we've discussed having a meeting. I'd have that meeting tomorrow if we want to do it. And if we can, we can resolve the, the issues, whatever they may be, whatever we're responsible for, let's do it. Let's do it. Let's get it over with. Let's move on to the next thing. Um, that's, that's kind of my take.